And I'm calling this meeting to order.
Yes.
Six thirty-two start time, Aldana. Barber. See member Barber in person. Delvay. Absent. Galdera.
Here.
Pauls. Kachak.
Here.
Online. Uh, Kim.
Here.
Online. Lee. Present. Minarby. Present. Quadri. I see Quadri online. Robati. Salis. And Young.
Here.
Online. Okay. You have Quorum.
That's great. Let us go to the Honolulu Fire Department. We know if anyone's here? All right. If Honolulu Fire Department does come on, do let Curtis know. We're going to go to Honolulu Police Department, District One.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
Hi, um, I'm Sergeant Daniel Cunningham from District One. Um, this month's stats are motor vehicle thefts. They're up a little bit from last, previous month from three to seven. Burglaries are the same, uh, at two. Thefts are up by one from five to six. Uh, car break-ins are up from one to four. Assaults are up from three to four. Then sex assaults, graffiti cases and drug cases are still the same as previous at zero. And the total calls for service are up from four hundred and six to four hundred and fifty-five. If you guys want, um, to see the stats online, can be found on the public website at HonoluluPD.org. And that's all I, I have.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions on the board?
Yes, I have.
District One? Okay, go ahead, on our.
I, you know, I have a concern. It's not a question. I live in the Alexander State, uh, by the freeway, which is next to the Capilani Hospital. You know, the, on the freeway, by the freeway, by the Capilani Hospital.
Yes.
So I, I just, uh, I noticed, uh, it's from a couple of months now that every weekend night, like a Friday night, Saturday night, in the midnight, on this part of the aisle, you know, like our area, you know, some of the, uh, youngest are, I don't know what their age, but in the car, they just use freeway as a racing track just for the fun. And they go in and they keep circle back, they come back, you know, like from this area. And it's so loud, have no silencer. So I don't know who, uh, you know, control them and I don't know. That's a big issue. We cannot even sleep, you know, they have, they are so loud. And they're going purposely without any, any silencer and they keep coming circle. Go and then after ten minutes they come back out from the exit or from where. So they use freeway as a racing track just for the fun.
Yes, um, I will reach out to, um, our night enforcement guys and also at a traffic division. But that's an island-wide, unfortunately, it's an island-wide problem. Um, the car cruises usually on the weekends they'll go. The entire length of their freeway up H3 down into Kanyoe. Um, it's really hard to predict where they're gonna go. They travel in a pack of a hundred or so. Um, but that, we have nighttime enforcement units with the traffic division. They have night solo bikes, so I'll reach out with them and, uh, and express your concerns.
Thank you. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Uh, thank you.
All right, we have another question on the board. If you could use the mic.
Assessment for. Do you have an assessment for the category, the explosion of illegal fireworks? A number count on that at all?
Um, I don't have it. We normally stop counting, um, is the fireworks violations after the New Year's itself. We start tracking it maybe about a month or two prior to New Year's and then we stop after.
Is there anyone else on the board? All right, I had a question. Um, I had emailed with Lieutenant Segusio a couple of weeks before about sharing information in this meeting about what you guys were doing with regarding fireworks. Do you want to share anything about that? You may not have prepared anything, but if there's anything that you're able to share, that would be great.
Um, so I don't have anything prepared for that. I wasn't, um, I wasn't briefed by Sergeant Lieutenant Segusio about it. Um, the fireworks is, is tough. I know the legislature is trying to work on new laws, but pretty much if the officer doesn't observe the violation or a neighbor is not willing to make a statement against their neighbor about popping fireworks, there's almost nothing we can do but, um, try to drive around and try to find them.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the community, if you are interested in sharing for people in person, please come to the mic. So please say your name.
My name's. My name's Karen Lynn. Um, I have a question. Now, this isn't in, um, uh, either District One or Seven, I don't think, but, uh, our building faces the Alawai Canal and, uh, the amount of noise coming from there is, is, you know, kind of unbelievable at times. Um, it's, uh, the, uh, mufflers and whatever. So, um, what is HPD? How, how can you address that? Because I think you have to catch people kind of in the act. But it's, um, sometimes it's like, you know, it's in my bedroom.
Yes, um, I know. Sorry, town and Waikiki is notorious for having loud mufflers. Um, like you said, one of officers would have to be next to a car with a loud muffler in order to enforce, um, a law, even like, uh, loud stereos. It's one of those things that officers need to see on sight.
Are there any other questions in person for Sergeant Cunningham? All right, what about anyone online, Curtis? Thank you so much for coming.
All right, thank you. Happy New Year.
Okay, is anyone from District Seven here?
Hey, good afternoon. I'm Lieutenant Thompson from District Seven. I'll start with the stats from January. There was ten motor vehicle thefts, seven burglary cases, seventeen thefts, and eighteen unauthorized entry into motor vehicle cases, which are car break-ins. A total calls for the service for the area is six thousand seventy-nine. And, um, I have a safety tip for, for the month. And due to the recent, uh, heavy rains, it's a flash flood preparedness. Um, and what you need to know, learn the best routes to high ground where you live, work and play, and travel should you need to evacuate. If your area is prone to flooding, keep emergency materials on hand such as sandbags, wood and plastic sheeting. Do not allow children to play near streams or drainage ditches. These areas can quickly become dead. If your vehicle stalls in a flooded area, get out as soon as possible. Floodwaters can rise rapidly and sweep away a vehicle and its occupants. Do not attempt to drive or move your vehicle through flooded areas because parts of the road may already be washed out with the water much deeper than it appears. Um, when hiking, use extreme caution anytime in heavy rains. If the rain falls upstream, a stream could flood within minutes. Do not cross streams until the flash flooding completely subsides. And this info can be found on, uh, Department of Emergency Management at Honolulu.gov slash D, DDM. And, um, if you have any further questions, I'll be happy to answer as best I can.
Thank you, Lieutenant Thompson. Anyone have questions? Okay, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, I just have one quick question. Motorized or, excuse me, electric bicycles. Are they ever gonna have to have license plates or licenses? Or they're just allowed to drive wherever they want?
So that, yeah, that's been kind of a touchy point in the legislature legislation. I know some officers have been forcing them, had to, as, um, certain ones as motorcycles, having to have the requirements of motorcycles, having license plates, registration and insurance. Um, I think those cases have, are still pending in the court to see what they're gonna decide on, on them. Um, I think if the courts decide that they fall into the category motorcycles, we can go out and force them as such, but it's still, it's still in a gray area at this time.
Anyone else in person on the board? What about online, Curtis? All right, what about in person here? Allison, can you say your name as well?
Hi, my name is Allison Peterson. Um, as far as the statistics for accidents or anything like that involving any of these e, uh, vehicles, whether they be mopeds or bicycles, has, has there been any kind of tracking and is there any kind of, um, significant increase or anything special about that?
You know, I don't know if there's any, any tracking has been done, but in my, in my experience, because of their more, there's more of them on the road, we hear more of them being involved in accidents. But, um, as far as the stats, I, I don't have or unaware of any stats at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee. Greg Quadra, Eisenberg Street. Officer, parking on Eisenberg Street and Moilili in general, is HPD ever gonna start enforcing parking in Moilili? Uh, it's a constant problem. People park, uh, let me use Eisenberg as an example. Eisenberg Street, the parking places are marked on the road and according to city code, if the street has marked parking places, you're not supposed to park anywhere else because they've already put a stall any place that has reasonable space to park. But every night, there's cars parked on the crosswalks, on the corners, two or three spots, or two or three cars to every parking spot. They encroach on driveways, they impede the refuse pickup from picking up refuse at our places. Uh, it's, it's really a problem. I mean, it's been a problem for twenty years. Uh, are we ever gonna do anything to address it?
I, I can pass that information on to the watches to make checks for the parking. We do get, um, frequent, uh, OIC complaints for parking in the area and there's enforcement done, um, Eisenberg, Houston, um, and the area along the King Street.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I could walk over there now. There's a dozen cars on Eisenberg Street parked illegally.
And another way is you call in one and call in the parking complaints as well.
I do, but they only tell me, they tell me that unless it's in front of my house, they won't do anything.
Yeah, I mean, they, they should be, if it's a, if it's in a violation, they should be citing the vehicles.
Yeah.
Yep, all right, well, thank you.
Any other community members in person?
Hi. Hi, my name is Collinson. Um, I'm here basically, it's same reason as this gentleman here, about street parking. And my street is really tight and I just wanna know if there's a possibility of marking the street with stalls, per se, because people, people are like, like he just explained, crawling over each other, blocking my driveway and I can't get out sometimes, you know, they just don't care. They, they think about themselves only.
After they're blocking. Sorry, he, continue. No, no, go ahead. So if they're blocking your driveway, please call nine-one-one. And, um, if it's completely blocking your driveway, the car will get towed. But as far as they. Sorry, I didn't get the last.
Sorry, it happens a few times. These guys just don't get the hint, pretty much. And, you know, maybe marking the line, they'll catch on a little. You know, how some of these streets, they got marked stalls at least where you can park. You know, it's nothing marked. These guys just go and encroach on everybody.
Yeah, as far as marking, I'll have to defer to the city to, to answer that part.
My street is Manalo Street, right by Washington Community School. There's two streets that, there's parking on both sides. Almost all the streets in this area, there's only, uh, parking on one side of the street. My, my street, there's two and it's crowded in all the time. And it's, you know, I do call the cops, but, uh, you know, it's just, they're just crawling over each other trying to get parking. Auto, auto parks here, they're made with, uh, one parking stall per unit, but there's couples that have two cars. So they're just hunting, hunting, hunting. And guess what? Come late at night, they're just gonna encroach on people. And it's kind of sickening already.
I could see the frustration in that, yes. Please call if they're blocking your driveway.
Yeah, I do, but, you know, it's like, what, when push comes to shove, they come at the end of the day, they're just gonna park wherever. And, you know, it's, it's just sickening already. You know, he explained it. It's very sickening and, uh, you know, they come first. It's not the homeowner, the property, whoever resides in the property, they don't, it doesn't matter. And it's really a sickening thing already.
All right.
I guess that's all I got to say. Um, I sent an email to you and you replied to me earlier today. Um, I'll, I'll follow up with you tomorrow or something. But, uh, I wanna contact somebody to see if I can get, uh.
Yeah, then there's opportunity to talk to our council member and the mayor's rep here, so feel free for that to happen later in the meeting. All right, go ahead, Danielle. Can you use the mic?
Thank you. I have one question regarding the parking to these two gentlemen and whoever wants to say. Oh, I understand this is a problem that covers the whole Moilili neighborhood. Do you have a, a couple of streets specifically in mind where this problem is particularly serious?
Pretty much the whole Moilili, Macaulay area, the parking, parking is a problem.
All over?
It's, it's far too many cars for the amount of space available.
Okay. Thank you.
Curtis, do we have anyone online? All right, thank you very much for coming, Thompson. I'm gonna assume that we are done with this. Did the Honolulu Fire Department show up? Okay, Board of Water Supply.
All right, good evening, Chair, Board and community members. I'm Stephen Nordstrom from the Board of Water Supply. And for the Macaulay Neighborhood Board District in the month of January, we had no main breaks to report. Um, our general announcement is to remind you, if you see water being wasted, such as a broken pipe, malfunctioning sprinkler, running faucet, excessive watering or something similar, please let us know. Uh, you can report it by, uh, going to our website, BoardOfWaterSupply.com/waterwaste. Email us at contactus@HBWS.org or you can always call eight oh eight seven four eight five zero four one. Our water is precious, so we wanna conserve as much as possible. And Chair, I believe it was a couple of meetings ago, you asked for an update on our financials. I just wanna let you know, we do have a team available to come next month. Are we still good with that?
Yes.
Perfect, just one.
Thank you for reaching out to arrange that.
Yeah, of course, you're welcome. And that's it.
All right, anyone on the board have any questions for Board of Water Supply?
Um, for any broken sprinkler, does that depend on the area? If I report it to you, will you guys see that the correct department fixes it?
Yes, yes. So if you see it at parks, let us know. It happens all the time. Parks work very closely with us to get it fixed. So, yeah, please. Thank you. Yep, you're welcome.
I guess to follow up on Chris's question, is there a number that we can call?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll give that number. It's, uh, eight oh eight seven four eight five zero four one.
One more time?
Eight zero eight seven four eight five zero four one.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anyone else on the board have something for Board of Water Supply or online? All right, do we have any community members? All right, Karen has a question. Karen, come to the mic. Come to the mic.
Is three one on, one also a way to contact you or not?
We prefer you, uh, reach out to our, to our, on that phone number I gave you because that way it'll get followed up immediately. We, uh, it's a voicemail, so you leave a voicemail and one of our staff members in my office, the communications office, will follow up on it ASAP. Because water waste is huge. We take that very seriously.
So you do broken sprinklers and what about like fire hydrants?
Anything that's water. If you see water being wasted, it could be anything. Just let us know and we'll follow up.
Okay.
Yes, definitely a fire hydrant. We, we, we manage those, so.
All right, do we have anyone else online? Great, Happy New Year. Thank you for coming.
Same to you, thank you.
All right, Michael, I think you're up.
Hello, board, community members. Mike O'Keefe with, um, the city. I'm the Deputy Director at the City's Department of Environmental Services and the Mayor's Rep. Uh, so first, a couple of announcements, uh, before I get into the updates from last meeting. Uh, just a reminder that the Mayor's February twenty twenty-five newsletter, uh, is available online. That's at Honolulu.gov forward slash mayor forward slash newsletter. Also, registration for the twenty twenty-five, uh, Neighborhood Board elections are open. Um, registration for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven, uh, board elections is open. Candidates can register online at the Neighborhood Commission's office, uh, website at Honolulu.gov forward slash NCO. Uh, voter registration is available via paper form also at Honolulu.gov forward slash NCO and questions can be directed to the Neighborhood Commission Office at eight oh eight seven six eight three seven one zero or at, uh, eight zero eight seven six eight three seven one zero or NCO at Honolulu.gov. So, uh, I have several follow-up meetings from the last item. I'll try to go through them as quickly as possible. Uh, there was a question about abandoned or vacant lots, uh, and building project permits. The question was, where can residents find out who is the property owner of an abandoned or vacant lot? And if there are any plans to develop the lot, is there a website or another source of information for these lots? Uh, so the City's Department of Planning and Permitting took this one. Um, so I'm gonna give you a couple of websites here, so, so bear with me. And, um, if you're interested in a particular one, um, you should write it down and I can certainly repeat myself. For property ownership, uh, you can refer to the Real Property Tax Office website. That's, and the website address is realproperty. Dot Honolulu.gov. For other property, uh, ownership resources, uh, you can check out Honolulu.gov forward slash DPP forward slash resources. And, uh, just for, I guess for general complaints about, um, derelict property, uh, you can go to, um, Honolulu.gov forward slash CSD forward slash report dash A dash concern. Anybody needs those repeating, I'm, I'm happy to do that. Second item, um, uh, about the illegal game room. A business owner and residents raised some concerns about an illegal game room operating in an abandoned building near the corner of Hume Hana Street, uh, one block south of King Street. Can something be done about this? Uh, Honolulu Police Department did take this one. Uh, the gambling, the gambling detail of the narcotics slash vice division made checks of the area. Sorry. Made checks of the area on January sixth, twenty twenty-five. Based on observation, the gambling detail has opened an investigation and is working with this District Seven Crime Reduction unit, and the District Seven Crime Reduction Unit, uh, regarding the property. So it seems like there's an ongoing investigation now. Um, for, for, um, you know, the City's Department of Planning and Permitting also added a comment here. Um, so that, so it seems like there's an illegal activity. There's also, you can also report unpermitted activities to the DPP at the same address I gave in the previous response, the report dash A dash concern URL. I can read that again if anyone needs me to. Um, but it sounds like HPD is following through on that. Um, I'll, uh, there was a, just a talk about parking on Eisenberg Street and I, I did get a response from the City's Department of Transportation Services and the Honolulu Police Department. So I'll just read what I have here. Uh, the question was, uh, when the new, when the new parking meters are installed on Eisenberg Street, is the city going to notify residents? Who is responsible for parking meter enforcement? So, first response was from HPD. The parking meters are part of a city project approved in twenty seventeen, initiated in response to communicate, community concerns regarding abandoned vehicles and limited parking turnover. The Department of Transportation Services, DTS, in coordination with the Department of Facilities Maintenance, is overseeing the installation of the meters. DTS, for their part, the city first notified area residents of the parking meters being installed on Eisenberg Street in December of twenty seventeen via, uh, a letter to this neighborhood board. The meter installations were completed on, uh, this doesn't make sense. January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five? Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, okay. Um, okay, great. Uh, completed on January thirteenth, uh, HPD is responsible for parking meter enforcement and began enforcing the meters operating hours of seven AM to six PM on January twenty-first. In light of recent media attention about the new meters and citizens' requests for information submitted to the mayor's office, the city has no plans for further public notification about the new meters on Eisenberg Street. A few more items here. Question about raised, uh, raised crosswalks. What is the process for requesting a raised crosswalk? Residents requested raised cross, crosswalks in the vicinity of Alawai Elementary and Kuhia Elementary. Uh, DTS, Department of Transfer Station Services. To assist DTS in determining whether raised crosswalks or speed bumps are appropriate near the two locations, um, please specify the exact intersection or area in question. And you, we can do that after I get to the questions here if you'd like. Another one, uh, Kapo Hulu Avenue Bike Path Lighting. There was a comment about, um, there are sections along the bike path on Kapo Hulu Avenue, mainly behind restaurants and buildings where there, there are no lights, which makes them dangerous, uh, dangerous at night. DTS, uh, the bicycle pathway off Kapo Hulu Avenue falls under the jurisdiction of Parks, Department of Parks and Recreation. Any lighting improvement project would need to be initiated through DPR. Um, we didn't get a response from DPR on this, so I'll have to keep that on the agenda for next, uh, for next meeting to see what they have to say about, um, lighting on the, on the bike path. Two more items. Um, uh, request to repair Diamond Head Park bathrooms by KCC. The men's bathroom has a, has a broken toilet seat and the women's bathroom has no running water. Um, the City's Department of Facilities Maintenance, which is responsible for maintaining a lot of that city infrastructure, responded. Due to repeated vandalism, DFM, Department of Facilities Maintenance, has been hesitant in spending more resources into the replacement of plumbing fixtures. However, in the interest of the public, we will investigate the current condition and make necessary repairs as resources are available. Last one. Uh, broken shower at Makale Beach Park. What is this, what is the repair status for the broken shower? Uh, DPR, Parks and Rec took this one. The shower is currently working. Staff, uh, check the shower regularly, repair and make repairs as needed. And that concludes my report for tonight, but I'm happy to take questions and more information.
Thank you so much. All right. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Okay, let's start with Dave.
Yes, uh, I'd like to just talk a little more about the, uh, bathroom up at Diamond Head, the point you just brought out. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say, I realize that's not in our area, but I think it's still a concern to us for a couple of reasons. Number one, people from our area go up there and go for a walk and would like to use it. And second of all, there's a, especially on Saturday morning, there's a lot of Japanese tourists up there. And of course, we wanna present a good picture to the tourists, you know, because in one way or another, almost everybody in this room is dependent upon tourism. Okay? And now, you mentioned something about, well, they don't wanna repair it because it was vandalism or something. Well, I understand that, but that doesn't mean you can just leave it set broken down, you know? If, if vandal's broke it, we fix it. And if they break it again, we fix it. And we keep doing that until someday, either they get tired of breaking it or we catch them or something, you know? But you can't just leave something broken down and say, oh, well, vandals did that, you know? So we're gonna leave it broke down restroom, okay? And actually, I got some pictures, if Curtis can put them up, to show you a little bit about it. Yeah, okay, that one, my. Yeah, that one, maybe you can't see it too well, but on the left side is where the sink's missing. That, that's in the. That's in the ladies' bathroom. My wife took that one for me. Okay, next, next slide. That, that one is in the men's restroom. Now, they, they have a backup. They have a garbage, instead of a garbage can or something, that somebody ties a black plastic bag to the door for your, for your rubbish. And sometimes it's hanging up like that, sometimes it's laying on the ground.
Thirty seconds.
You know, who puts it there? But next slide. That's where the men's, men's toilet should be. It's not just broken seat, the whole thing is missing, completely missing. And I've seen sometimes when people have just gone to the bathroom, right on the floor, right there, and just left it, you know? Yeah, now look, that, bring that one back, please.
Fifteen seconds, Dave.
That one. Look, it says, if you can see it, it says out of order. I think it's got the mayor's name on there or something. But I took these pictures on, I believe, December 23rd. Of course, it's still the same way. And I got a feeling it was probably that way long before I even saw it and took the pictures because the people had already written things. I tie them up. Well, anyway, anyway.
The pictures, though.
Let me, give me a few more seconds.
Few more seconds.
I talked earlier this week to the head of this Department of Facilities Maintenance, Gene Albano. And he didn't say it was because anything like that. He said it was still a squabble between the city and the state as to whose jurisdiction it is to keep that bathroom up. That is the same thing I heard from when Roger Babcock was the head of that department. And just after COVID, they never reopened that bathroom as they did all the others. And he, he had the same excuse, they didn't know whose jurisdiction it was. Finally, they worked that out and they said it's the city's to take care of it. So something needs to be done.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Wish I had more time.
Thank you for the pictures. That was great. All right, who else on the board? All right, go ahead, Ed. Can you talk into the mic?
Michael. Does the mayor, it's a three, a three-part, does the mayor and our council have before them a referendum, a petition regarding the explosion of fireworks after the very horrific incident during New Year's? I think there was a death as a result of it. Really? Six deaths, I've been corrected. And the officer number one, there's two officers that spoke to it. Officer number one, I.
Can you put the mic closer to your face?
Officer number one, I asked directly, is there a statistic on how many illegal fireworks citations have been served? And he says, well, we only have it since New Year's. Well, right around the corner is going to be 4th of July. And then again and again, and actually fireworks keep going off throughout the year by unconscious beings. And my second part of it is that referendum, if it isn't even before you guys, the mayor, going to be voted on as a law? And then finally, what will be the penalty for a first, second, and third time offender? Just money or imprisonment?
Yeah, so that's a great question. I personally, I can't recall anything recently. I, I didn't want to put our new council member on the spot, but he is here and he can take it when it's his turn to talk. Yeah, thank you.
All right, anyone else on the board? All right, anyone online, Curtis? Okay, so community members, go ahead and just come to the microphone, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Michael. I have several things, first of all, for following up on those very dangerous intersections. I can give you the addresses, so I won't take the time from my videos. I'm sorry, Laura Ruby. Thank you very much. Yes, so I can follow up on that. But I have several other ones. Just as I was coming here, I made a loop around the neighborhood. There were at least three cut fences by the Manoa Stream. They overpass for Kapialani. And that was supposed to have been fixed last time. They were supposed to have herded all of the encamped individuals out. And I presume they would have fixed those fences. So it has not been done. Second of all, I received in the mail a, an advertisement. Now, this is strange. The advertisement had that proposed Monster Bridge, but it was incorrectly drawn. And the tower was in the middle of the canal and there were some posts in it. Now, I didn't have a chance to read all of the things. It was probably geared for retailers or something. Probably a lot of things to the retailers. I'm, I would be surprised if there weren't some things that were not factual also in that announcement. So I think the mayor ought to really have a quality control person before things like that are sent out. And let's see, I think that's, I think that, I think that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Mike, did you want to respond to anything before?
Thanks, Morgan. So Laura, I'll get the, I'll get the crosswalk addresses from you. You, you mentioned the cut fence along the Manoa Stream near. Okay, okay, okay. And then the, the bridge thing, maybe you could email me a copy of that? Okay, okay, okay. Okay, no problem.
All right, any other community members?
Aloha, my name is Merrill Kalapris. Thank you for coming out this evening. So I was watching, I haven't been to a meeting for quite a while, a couple of months now. And during that time, we had some pretty bad flooding going on. And, you know, I've been a surfer almost all my life. And I surf out at Bulls, I surf out at Magic Island, I surf all this, this South Shoreside a lot. And I do a lot of photography there as well. And watching the homeless encampment garbage, all the opala getting flushed out into the Alawai, which ends up going out into those areas where we surf. And I'm not the only person that surfes, there's a whole, you know, half a town surfes out there. All that stuff gets all out into the ocean. I don't know at what point, I can't understand at what point, because when I was in high school, we didn't see this kind of stuff. Okay? When I grew up, we didn't, we didn't have homeless camping under the bridges at the corner of Kalakaua and King Street, South King Street. We didn't have people taking couches, mopeds. I mean, I don't even know what else I saw. I saw tons of garbage being flooded out into the Alawai, especially the last two floods we had. I mean, it was so bad that it filled up a portion of the, of the Alawai on the Kapo Hulu end, okay? So I think that really needs immediate attention as soon as possible. And, you know, they keep going underneath the bridge, there needs to be some.
Thirty seconds.
They need some law enforcement. Other thing I have is, I have other things, and I'll give you the papers so you can take it with you. The ongoing daily issue from Monday through Friday, 3:30 to 6:30, we have a tollway zone on South King Street, starting from McKinley High School all the way down to University Avenue. The far right lane is a tollway zone. People are constantly parking over there. I've been barking up this tree for almost a year now, coming to these meetings. And I've been calling, I've been, I've been meeting the, you know, I.
Mary, it was two minutes.
To Keith Horrecall, we did walkthroughs, we did all this stuff, okay? And we're still getting, we're still chasing our tail with this thing. We, it's a daily thing and it's, it's, it's very annoying when we gotta be, you know, subject to kid. And the last one, sorry, almost pal. Last one is, we have a garbage issue being dumped in front of the DHL building on Coolidge Street. There's people dumping overnight, they're dumping all their garbage over there. And it's, 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 you know, it makes our neighborhood looks like crap. And so we would really appreciate it if you could address those issues. And thank you again for coming out. Thanks for the time.
Mike, did you want to respond to any of that? No, okay.
I, I haven't been to a meeting in a while and you may have addressed it recently, but the bridge, the small pedestrian bridge between, over the former Houston ditch, the Alanaiu Stream. What's the status on that? Can you check it, please?
I thought the status was from six months ago that they just said they weren't going to fix it. Oh. Was that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up. It's been, it's been a minute.
I also want it fixed. Um, all right, is there anyone else here in person? All right, we have a couple more people.
Hello, Charlene. Several things. Several things, one regarding the bridge. I cannot help but think, I'm, I'm really bad, I'm being negative, but pedestrian and bicycles and things. I'm guessing, I'm thinking that it might invite more criminals, um, being hijacked while crossing the bridge. And people are jumping over, you know, steal my bag, jump over the bridge and swim across whichever side is, is closer. Because I've seen people jump off the, where is that? It's not by University Avenue, but a little further down where maybe the Manoa or Palolo Stream comes out by Ilani School. Somebody jumped in there because somebody was being chased and they swam all the way across the canal. So I figure if they can swim from there to there, they can jump over the bridge and swim halfway, you know, kind of thing. Okay, so that's one issue of why I'm against this bridge. I mean, I, I'm sure it serves many purposes, but I'm just very fearful of being hijacked. But, okay. Then the second thing is about the aerial and the fireworks. People are saying, yes, it's cultural, but the cultural thing is miniscule compared to the, the aerials. Cultural is not aerials.
Thirty seconds.
Children, we cracker balls and sparklers and that we played on the ground in our yard. And neighbors may have put like those 10,000 firework things on a ladder.
Try and speak into the mic.
I'm sorry, but yeah. The culture thing doesn't hold because it's not the culture to go through aerial.
Anything you want to add? All right, do we have any other community members in person? All right, what about online? No one online? All right, thank you so much for coming. Good to have you here. All right, and we have our new council member who is here in person. This is great. Thank you for coming, Councilmember Nishimoto.
Thank you, aloha, community members and board members. I've been on the job for about a month, so we are just getting acclimated. First thing, I want to introduce my entire staff. I wanted to bring them tonight to, so you can put a name to a face when you call our office. Starting with Taylor Datt, you guys have dealt with her for many years. She worked for me in my state house office. But Taylor Datt, she'll be covering your board predominantly the bulk of the time. Kalito Kujo, she worked for me, session staff several years ago. Keith Williams, he worked for me on the state budget side for the last two years. And then Sophia Anderson, who also worked in the state capitol with Senator Rosbaker before. So this is my team. I wanted you to, to know them. So when you call our office, you know who you're talking to. Predominantly, you'll be dealing with Taylor, but you know, when you call, any one of them may answer the phone. We are going to be continuing our, our e-blast that we do every couple, every week, every couple of weeks. So I think Taylor's going to be dropping a QR code into the chat. And we also have a physical QR code that you could scan and sign up for our, our e-blast. But we did it every, every other week, basically, when I was the rep. We'll be continuing to do it in the council. Much more information to get out there. This council district is Palolo toward Avenue. So while I'm really familiar with this area, since I represented it for so long, there's a bunch of new areas, so we'll be covering that in the e-blast as well. So not everything may pertain to your neighborhood board area, but you know, it is in our council district. And I guess, oh, you had the question about fireworks, Ed. So we had a briefing in the council a couple of weeks ago. The briefing was done by HPD and the prosecutor's office. What they told us was basically the laws that are on the books are quite onerous for them to bring to prosecution. And that really, it's going to be up to the state legislature to make some tweaks to the law so that it would be easier to prosecute people. That's why we've seen a lack of prosecution so far on these fireworks cases. It's way too onerous for them to prove. I know Andrew's here. I know that they're working on it in the, in the legislature along with Ekeiko and Carroll. But it really is up to our state legislators to kind of tweak the laws so that HPD and the prosecutor's office will have an easier time with that.
As a writer and a wordsmith, I like words, they're like gold nuggets. Maybe I'm just stupid. Onerous, you've used it twice. Okay, the laws are onerous or onerous?
Onerous.
Onerous, go ahead. Definition.
Uh, it's, it's a high bar. It's hard to deal with.
It's hard to deal with.
Yes. So they're not bringing prosecution because it's too high a bar for them to, to prove right now. So they, they've asked the state legislature to make some changes.
In the recent lethal results of illegal fireworks over the holidays.
Yes.
I've been corrected, six deaths, not just one.
Uh, I think, yeah, it's, it's multiple deaths.
Yeah, at what point?
Within the past couple of days, there's been that. Okay.
How many more lives before it's no longer onerous, the bar is too high to, to address?
Well, I mean, I, I, I don't want to make predictions on what the legislature will do, but I'm very, well, I shouldn't say I'm, I'm very sure, but I'm, I'm somewhat sure they're going to do something this year. So it's, it's top of mind in the legislature. So I, I, I am optimistic, let's put it that way. As, as the wordsmith, optimistic.
All right, I don't know if people have questions. I had a question really quickly to follow up on the fireworks. So I haven't, I've been on the island for four years and I talked to a local here who told me that previously you did not need a permit to buy basically the fireworks, like the sparklers and stuff that stays on the ground. Is that true? And if so, why did they change it to make a permit for non-aerial fireworks?
Before, you didn't need any permits, right?
For, for anything that, whether it was on the ground or in the air?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I think that was a city council decision before I got there several years. But I'm, we can do the research and find out, but.
I, I mean, from this conversation that I had with my friend, we were just saying, why does the city make it hard for people to buy fireworks that usually don't result in some sort of injury, right? Like, they're usually considered safe to the extent they can be safe because they don't get shot up, rather than basically people saying, well, if I'm gonna, the paperwork is too onerous in general, so I would now just want to go the route of shooting the stuff.
The word is catching on.
Exactly.
Okay.
Annoying.
Yeah, yeah, well, well, you know what, I'll have my staff do some research, get back to you next meeting. There was a bill in the council last year. I don't know the details because I wasn't there, but there was a bill regarding sparklers and that kind of thing. It got vetoed by the mayor and it did not get overturned by the council. So.
Thank you. All right, who has other questions? Dave?
All right, Dave, fire away.
I happened to be outside the little city hall by Sajiu Restaurant in Alamoana Shopping Center.
Okay, the satellite city hall there, okay?
And I saw a couple of guys, firemen, sitting at a, at a table like, like this. And I asked them what they're doing. They said, they're issuing permits. And they said, the fireworks permit costs $25 and they issued 20,000 of them. That, that's roughly half a million dollars. What happens to that half million dollars?
It's a good question. We'll, we'll find out for you.
Thank you.
All right.
I'd like to know too, actually.
Who else on the board in person? Anyone online? All right, we'll save them for the community once. Anyone else on the board? No? All right, go ahead, Daryl.
Congratulations, Councilman Scott. Thank you also for your service for being a state representative for our district. But I have a question. Once again, if, are you the one that, to speak to about light poles that's along the promenade on the Maoko side of the Alawai Canal, the walkway, the bike path?
I am. Yes.
I, I have, yeah, I, I do walking every, every day and, you know, like nighttime too and.
Yeah, I, I know you sent, you sent us an email, yeah, Daryl?
Yeah, I, I know you sent, you sent this in email, yeah, Daryl?
Yeah.
When I was in the state house.
Okay.
You sent this email when I was in the state house. Um, we were not in a position to handle it. But we will handle it now. Um, I think you were very specific in your email too. Yeah. You, you identified which poles, right?
Yeah, I, I, I got the numbers. So maybe I can, uh, uh, get it to you folks. Um, how, how should I get it to you? Uh, is it the website?
Uh, no, my email address is scott.nishimoto@honolulu.gov. And that also leads to another thing I'd like to announce. I think people are still sending emails to my Capitol email address. Um, I don't get those anymore. So we've gotten calls saying, hey, how come you're not responding? Um, but they've sent it to the Capitol and I no longer have access to that account. So if you're going to email me, email me at my honolulu.gov account. But Daryl, if you could email me at scott.nishimoto@honolulu.gov, um, you will put in the riser whenever you, whenever you give it to us. But I know you were very specific in which poles and I appreciate that.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll get it to you. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, you, you sent it to me while I was a state rep and it didn't fall under me. So that does.
Okay.
Daryl, anything else?
No, thank you. Thank you.
By the way, Daryl, it's been a long time.
Yeah, it's been a long time, Scott. Good to see you. Okay.
All right. Any other questions in person from the board? I don't see any. All right. Community members. All right.
All right, Karen. On the, um, on the light poles, uh, again, that's 311. They can be reported there on, on your phone, right? Okay. Cause I, I called someone also on, on 311. Um, and then the gentleman in the yellow with the parking issue.
Your parking issue? Um, if you could just talk to Taylor after, we could get the street and, um, we'll put in a riser for enforcement.
And then the, the other issue I had was, uh, either your last job or this job, I can't remember where it was, but there was a bill for noise, um, cameras in Waikiki. And was, I don't remember if it was a state or the council and/or whether it passed or not. But what the status of that is.
Noise cameras in Waikiki?
It was, uh, yeah. Um, when there's really loud noise on the road, the cameras would capture it and then capture the, the, uh, and it was a bill either in the state house or the state or.
I don't, I don't remember, um, a bill in the state house like that. Um, you know, there's thousands of bills, so I could be, I could be mistaken, but I don't remember, I don't remember it in the house. Um, if it's in the council, I, I probably wasn't paying attention last year because I wasn't a councilman yet. Um, we can take a look and see if we can find it, but that does not sound familiar to me, at least as a, in the state legislature.
All right. Who's next?
Okay. Hi, Scott. Oh, everything is good. Hi, Taylor. Let me recognize you back there. Anyway, so I, I did a walkthrough with Taylor last year. I think it was like October, yeah? Sometimes. So I think she might've passed some of that information about that walkthrough we did. So it's pretty much the same thing that I just spoke about earlier to, to the mayor's rep. And so, um, I was wondering if we could start, maybe if we could do another walkthrough during the times when, when like, you know, after hours on yeah, that, that, that tollway zone on South King Street. And then we have issues with, vehicles parking on Coolidge, Date. Um, these are commercial vehicles. We have one right now on Date Street between Houston and, uh, Coolidge Street. So what's happening now is all the cars that used to park on Eisenberg because of the meters are all jumping into our area now. And we expected that, you know, but it's just getting worse because now they have no place to park. And so I was wondering if we could do a walkthrough, like it has to be between 3:30 and 6:30 so you can actually see what's, what's going on firsthand. Uh, we, like I said, we already did a walkthrough and so, you know, we could.
Yeah. Right, right. Well, anytime you want to do a walkthrough, I'm willing. Um, I think to get some immediate relief, we'll put in a riser about the, about the no parking.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll put in a riser for that, um, so that, you know, we can get on it right away. And then we can do the walkthrough, you know, whatever. You can just talk to Taylor and we can schedule something. But as far as the no parking, people parking in the no parking zone in the afternoon, that should be pretty easy to take care of. It's just an enforcement issue. So.
Oh, I don't believe I call it.
Okay, okay.
It's stuck.
Yeah.
Same area. It's always from Stadium Park down.
Can you come to the mic?
Always from the same area of Stadium Park to downtown. It's the, just the.
It's no parking from 3:30 to 6:30. Okay. We'll, we'll put in the riser to make sure they, they enforce. Um, and then the walkthrough, just whatevers, bro. Yep. Okay. Yep.
All right. Who else in person?
We went on the walkthrough and talked about the Eisenberg uh, meters and we had one request. Of course, I don't think that a 2017 survey applies seven years later to 2025. But, and also they go into the residential areas and we're asking for relief and I don't know if we can do that, but the people that work there, the family people are complaining that it starts at seven in the morning and there's no reason why we can't have it start at nine like, um, Palakaua for the people that work in that area. We'd like a consideration to start the meter timing at nine o'clock in the morning.
That's a, that's a good suggestion. We'll take that to DTS. DTS. We'll take that to DTS. Um, like you said, 2017, um, we, we got, we walked into this. It happened our first month. So we're, we're trying to deal with it, but, um, this predates even the current administration. So, uh, I, I'm not sure. I, I think it was in response to the tow company that used to rent out in the, um, the old Bollardome lot. And people called in because of that, because the tow company was taking up the stalls. That's just my guess, but, um, seems a long way, a long time ago. And yeah, no, I, I hear you. Laura.
Um, as for the debris that came down over the big storm.
Storm, storm, storm.
Hi, my suggestion is that you put up about four nets, uh, of starting way up Mauna and then space them out till they end up down sort of on there. That way people say, oh, no point pollution or whatever they say. That way you catch that it's probably the people up above that are throwing their debris into the stream. And, um, it would be really good not to have it all down in our neighborhood. Thank you.
No, I hear you. We're going to be start, we're going to start budget briefings in March. And that's the kind of thing that, that I'll talk to them about to try to put some money for that kind of nets and more so need to, need to manage the nets too, right? Make sure they're maintained because if not, you're just creating another problem with flooding upstream. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right. Anyone else in person? All right. Online, I think we have Joanne.
Okay. Hi, Scott.
Hey, Joanne.
So, you know, I've been dealing with you since you were in the House of Representatives. And my question is, when are things actually going to get done? I mean, I, I came just, I went to dinner, so I just got back. So I didn't get to talk to the mayor's rep, but I've, I've had the chief of staff, Andy Sugg, John Naukui. I had deputy Hori Kawa. I called all these people to do walkthrough. I don't want to do so many walkthroughs. I want something done. We went through all the illegal parking. We went through, um, all the illegal dumping. We have so many transitional housings around here. We don't want any more transitional housing. Also, we also had, um, what is that? That gambling, gambling house raids on, uh, I think it was Eisenberg not too long ago. So I've dealt with the mayor. I actually have talked to the mayor several times. My question is to all our representatives, when is actually something going to get done? Cause it's so frustrating. Um, and I think that's why I decided this year, well, previous years as well too. I voted Republican. I voted for Donald Trump. I voted for him because I wanted change. And I think when I look at how fast he can do something, I'm thinking, why can't you guys work as fast too? Like he only has been in office a couple of weeks. Maybe some of the things you, you see him doing, you might not have liked, but at least he's moving. And that's what I want to see with our representatives as well. Moving fast, not years.
Thirty seconds.
You know, so many years going by. I mean, seven years I've complained about the same thing. And still to this day, the homeless are occupying our parks, destroying our bathrooms and everywhere else. So when, I want to know a timeframe. When are these things going to get done? I don't want just discussion, discussion, discussion. I want something to happen. So when is that going to happen? Or do I have to wait another seven years?
I, I hope you don't have to wait seven years. I, I am disturbed with the same things you are, Joanne. Um, all I can tell you is that we're working on pieces of legislation to try to alleviate some of the things you're worried about. Um, you know, for the gambling houses, we co-signed on to a bill that basically took the recommendations of the task force that was formed, um, to crack down on that. So we introduced the bill on that. Um, my staff is working on several bills regarding homelessness to try to maybe not, I don't think we're ever going to cure it, but we're going to try and make the situation better. Uh, as far as a timeframe, I, I can't give you a timeframe. Um, I don't know if anybody could. Um, but I, I am trying to do my best and, you know, that's all I can do in this job.
I know, but that is not enough because it's not getting done. That's the problem.
Okay. Well, I can't do more than my best, but I'm trying. Um, and.
And the thing, one more thing I want to just really quickly say is that I don't appreciate that the law-abiding citizens, we get nothing. We have to pay for drug addicts. You know, the aerial, I hope we're not having to pay for their medical costs because when people make bad choices, it shouldn't go to the taxpayers.
All right.
That's how I feel.
Thank you, Joanne. Is there anyone else, Curtis, that wants to talk?
Well, do I have an answer or no?
Okay.
I just want to answer.
I don't think there's, I think there's been an answer.
I want the board, I want the board meeting to bring answers, not just for us to discuss things, but to have some solutions.
Joanne, I'm going to, you have reached your two minutes. I'm going to pivot to this other community member, John.
Not about time, it's about.
John, are you on? John, are you there? All right. Sorry, we're not going to be able to take your questions. You have another one? Go ahead.
Scott, regarding the Eisenberg Bollardome. Uh, when I got here in the seventies, it was full on and I bowled there and.
I did too.
Yeah, back in the day. And then it went, uh, south and, and, and died. And it sat there until just recently, like just tonight I rode my bicycle by and they leveled it. And they're going in and it says, uh, Hale Muiili. Is it going to be a transitional thing, housing for more?
No, it's, it's going to be, um, DHHL affordable housing for their beneficiaries. Um, and that's a state project, so I'll, I'll leave it up to the state people to talk about it. Um, but it is not going to be transitional housing.
All right. Because it did take forever for that, uh, guy, the, the developer, I guess, to get approval? And it just happened? Got his approval?
Yeah, there were some issues with funding, um, especially on the federal level because it has to do with Hawaiian beneficiaries. There was some holdups, but that got resolved and the project is moving forward.
Mark?
All right. Thank you so much for coming. It was great to have you in person and congrats.
Thank you.
All right. We have a presentation. Kamole Lane is going to be giving a presentation. Great. Thank you for coming. Do you have any visuals or?
Everyone, um, I have some handouts.
Awesome.
You also have the link in the agenda that was printed, but, um, I don't know if board, what the protocol is with this board. Do you guys want handouts first or should I do the audience? Okay.
I would just say, yeah, go ahead and pass them around when you went and give your presentation. And then Curtis, if you don't mind pulling that up on the screen.
Aloha mai kaka. Um, my name is Wei and it's my daughter. She wanted to come to a meeting and see what it was like. So start them young. Um, aloha, everyone. Our, our family has owned a very small lot on Kamole Lane, uh, which he stops into Young Street. It's very close to the library and to Makali Bike. Um, if you're figuring out where Kamole Lane is, um, and it is part of our lot has been vacant. Um, we've had, had dumping. There is a very old two-story house on it where we've had, um, tenants that we have a long relationship with, but it has been time for a while to do something better with the lot. Um, we can't park. The city hasn't allowed us to park commercially on the, the empty side of the lot. So we've allowed a church across the way to use it when they needed a few nights a week. Um, our tenants park there and, um, we understand Young Street doesn't have sidewalks, doesn't, it's kind of a mixed bag of things. And it really is time for us to take the responsibility to improve our small lot. So, um, I'm coming to let you all know that we plan to redevelop this portion of the lot. I heard a question about empty lots and redevelopment earlier on the evening. Um, we've planned a 20-unit building. Uh, 15 two-bedrooms, five one-bedroom units. Um, and we're working under the city's Bill Seven laws. I, I hear the frustration about the lack of parking. I really do. Um, we've tried to put as many stalls as we can here, um, as actually many, many more than what was incentivized by Bill Seven, which actually allows for no, up to no parking. So we have nine and actually as we're going through the city's, um, with DPP review process, it's, we've learned that it may be possible to add an extra stall, a 10th stall due to the zoning and the way our street is particularly configured. Um, I'm here to answer any questions. We're probably still about a year away from construction. Although our plans are, um, were recently submitted to begin the review process. Um, so yeah, that's all. Short presentation. I'm, if, if, uh, folks want a copy of the handout, um, and didn't get one, I'm happy to, I don't know, go through you.
Sure.
Morgan.
We can figure it out.
Yeah, we'll figure something out. I'm happy to come back again.
And we can share for right now if there's any people that want to see others. All right. Thank you, Wei, for coming. If you just want to hang out here by the mic for questions, um, I just wanted to say I'm excited about this. I've passed by that lot all the time when I bypass on King Street. So that'd be great to have a new development there. Um, I wanted to figure out, um, where you guys are in the permitting process. What's going on with that?
So we submitted, um, our package, permit package set, uh, November 21st to DPP. And we've just, literally just in the last two days, gotten the first round of comments back from all the departments, you know, everywhere from border water supply to zoning to fire, et cetera. So our architects are working on, um, with the engineers on addressing those. Our architects are, um, Andrew Newman and Kevin Miramar. They have a very small firm called Alma AE. Um, you will probably know their work if you've seen the Art Space Lofts project on Waimea Street, um, in Kakaako. That was an earlier project they did when they were working with Urban Works. Um, they also worked on, let's see, Punahou's kindergarten. They've worked on a few other, um, projects for nonprofit organizations in the area and also some small, again, small lot development, um, projects. So they are not, um, green. They're very experienced and very committed architects. Yeah. Happy to answer any other questions you have.
All right. Who on the board in person has questions? It ended up.
Hi, um, you all own the building and then I see the name of two developers. I only recognize the one, Ekenakea. Who would own the building?
So, um, the building is going to be owned actually by a group which would include myself, Ekenakea Development. And also some investors which we're working on getting right now. And.
From Hawaii?
Ideally, yes, ideally.
But that's not the stipulation. Because it's your land, you could potentially say you could only, you can invest in this if you're local and care about housing for local families.
Potentially. We're working on all the, getting all the financing together right now. We've only recently just got kind of a first, very rough round of bids from general contractors. You can imagine it's not inexpensive to build. So we are also planning on getting some debt financing, ideally with some of the local banks here. And trying to keep as much of the project local as possible. That's very important. You know, not only do we, does my family own the parcel, but my husband is also part owner of a pizza shop around the corner. So we've been in the neighborhood a long time. You know, our employees live in the neighborhood. They work here, obviously, and we have three to four employees in the pizza shop. So not much, small business, but we really understand where you guys are coming from on that sense.
I was recently introduced to the concept of trying to address Hawaii's housing crisis by looking at the demand versus the supply. And so the idea that instead of us just continuing to build more and more housing, we should really be much more intentional and thoughtful in putting limits on who has access to the value of the units that we are so freely or not freely developing. And so the question about. If this is going to be owned by a trust. And the trust is not folks who are from this community, whose number one priority is housing for our community across generations. So building community wealth. I would ask that we maybe consider it because we're so early in the planning process. I know it's very easy for me to say, I sit up here and it's not my money and it's not my land, but I really care about housing for this community. And we're not going to only build our way out of it. We are going to continue to build and the thinking about that as intentionally as possible. Particularly because you're so privileged and fortunate and have, and I'm sure it's the kuliana to have this, this land.
Thank you. I really, what you say really resonates with me. I've spent my entire adult career working in the nonprofit sector. And I actually currently co-facilitate a group of local philanthropies and other nonprofit organizations who are interested in exploring the idea of community wealth building that we see happening in many, 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 many other municipalities, which means community. That the real estate assets in the community are owned in large part by the community, which I know we haven't seen enough of that here in our city. So I take what you say to heart and really hope to make that happen.
All right, anyone else on the board here? Paul? Can you speak into the mic?
Kamele Lane, it's. So Kamele Lane is a small one-way lane. It stretches two blocks, connecting King to Baritania with Young Street bisecting. McCully is the closest, very large street. And then the big landmarks are on King Street, the library is kind of right at the very end of Kamele, on the King Street end. Baritania, I can't remember what the. Yeah, yeah, very close to now Savers. The, the auto, the mechanics that do all the, yeah, they're right there on the corner too.
All right, any community members? Yes, there's a couple of them. Go ahead and come to the mic if you want to speak.
Oh, sorry.
Rentals, rentals or owners?
Okay, so the question I heard is rentals or owners and elevator or no elevator? So these will be rental units. Under the city's Bill Seven, they're supposed to be targeted at under 100% AMI. However, we're aiming for a bit lower in the 80 to 60 to 80%ish, probably more like in 60% AMI. There will be an elevator, there will be stairs, there will be fire suppression. Trying to think what else. There will be dedicated marked parking for mopeds as well as bikes and cars.
You're improving the streetscape with the.
Yeah.
Nobody else has.
We're going to be adding, sorry, this is my, my helper, Christian. And we're going to be able now to add a lot more greenery, fronting Young Street and around the corner to Kamele. That we haven't been able to do yet because it's been an old parking lot.
All right.
Thank you, Sharon. On this paper, I I don't know if I'm reading it correctly. It says 15 two-bedroom, one-bedroom units, yada, yada. And you only have nine parking stalls?
Yes, we actually, we may be able to get 10.
One for each unit?
No, we, we have to have an ADA stall, which is, and we also have to have a loading stall for off-street loading. So the lot is only about 7,000 square feet and that's pretty much all we could fit there is 10 stalls. Including the loading, we have a stall with marked moped parking and the, the city has standards for how big those need to be. But we have learned as we're going through our permit review with DPP that there is a chance we could put an extra stall. So I'm waiting to get that confirmed. So there may be 10, 10 stalls, I, I understand, for 20 units.
I guess.
I know you guys would like to have like 40 or 50 stalls for 20 units.
After, after all the parking with, you know, Eisenberg and things, Eisenberg is right down the street from you. And there's a lot of issues. And once somebody sells or people keep moving, they're going to need more than one stall per unit. Just saying.
Allison?
I just want to say that I appreciate that you guys are coming out here and being open and transparent with the public and being considerate and thoughtful with your project.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Danielle.
Thank you. Thank you again for coming here. Are you, are we going to have a in-depth presentation on this project? This is it?
I'm happy to come back with more information.
Okay, because it is very interesting what you propose, but it raises a lot of questions that need to be addressed.
Is there something that you wanted to specifically address?
Well.
Because I think this.
Many things. One, in what context is this building? Because we don't even have a map that shows what is the surrounding, single-family, what type of zoning, what type of density. Then about the design, we have not enough information about the design because it's true, it's a small lot. But on the ground floor of this building, there would be enough space for a lot of parking. So what are the reasons not to create all that parking? Then why making rental rather than for purchase? In what way would benefit more the community? Since we have a great housing problem. And, and probably many other, many other questions. I appreciate a lot of little details, including, including. The electrical photovoltaic and another, I really appreciate that. And I'm also concerned that a half a mile distance from the. From the bus is, is very good for a population of a certain age, becomes. A little bit iffy when, since these are one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, it could also be for elderly people. So there are a number of questions I would like to ask. Thank you very much.
Okay, maybe you can email them to me and then we can figure out a time where she can get back and address.
Appreciate you proposing it and coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other questions that I'm missing? Great, thank you so much for showing up, Boya. It's great to have you here.
Thank you. Nice to see you all.
All right, so I know that Brooks is not able to make it tonight because one of his golden retrievers is having some sort of emergency. So Elmer. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'm Makai, University of Hawaii. Let me kind of keep it short because I think you guys have a few more here. I provided a report. We have about nine projects ongoing at the University of Hawaii, which includes the Ever side of University Avenue, which, which is the university lab school, our college of education. We are actually planning to move them to on-campus. We're also, if you drove on, on those street, we have a new facility right next to the old, or the former Noah site. It's right across from our dorms. It's going to be a graduate student apartment unit. It will help, it will also have a lot of parking for them, but the point of that was just to get our faculty on campus. So they don't have to park in the community and in that respect. But also what's going to happen is the children's center, which is on that lot right next to the PBS, will move into that facility. And it will be a multi-unit, a multi-service where it includes not only housing, but also small businesses that will be in there at the same time. McCarthy Mall, if you have been in campus, where they're building the new. College of Ed, we're going to do some renovation of that area because if you've been there, the trees have really outgrown the sidewalks. So we're trying to improve the causeway. As for impacting this lower campus, the athletic department is really going to start increasing their effort to expand that lower area. We are meeting with our neighbors to try to do a better job of being a lot more open. As you know, varsity color place has always been a challenge for everybody. So hopefully we can work with the committee partners with that. I, the last meeting, I had some requests from the community regarding information on the different areas. I believe Laura asked about the sites going into varsity circle. We actually, if our plans for the lower campus will include the beautification of that entryway. We have not talked to our new president yet about the other projects yet. But the president did make an announcement today regarding impacts of what's happening with the College of Ed, the Department of Education at the federal level. It will impact the University of Hawaii, especially those, we, we are a research one institution. Where almost, almost 70% of that funding are from the federal government. And most of that is for our bodies, in the sense of our people that we work for us. So they're working on soft money. So we are watching that. But the other component which is very, very, very challenging is the impact to our financial aid. That has really impacted not only our campus, but every school within the United States. So we're watching it and I'll try to give you guys a report on that. But outside of that, I'm here to answer any question you guys have.
All right, who has questions from the board? Okay, go ahead, Edendita.
There's also the potential of revenue loss from international students, correct, given the climate at the federal level?
Correct. We are actually, thanks to, we had a great discussion. Our higher ed chair happens to be here, but he's been really active at trying to get a better grasp of what's happening with our, with our component, with our international. But we're also trying to make it a lot more affordable and reasonable for the community. And so we are working on the tuition and, and project. One small note, because he's here, for the first time for a while, for a long time, he's going to hold his hearing at the University of Hawaii campus. College, College, Community Higher Education. So I definitely applaud his mind.
Well. Anyone online? Okay, community members come to the mic.
Hi, Elmer. Thank you again. Laura, for being again. You know, I did ask you, what is the percentage of occupancy for all the dormitory rooms to suggest that there is full service there? I think I also ask you, all of our eating establishments on the university close up real early and nobody has anywhere to go to socialize or to study in the cafeterias even. And once upon a time, you people might remember, East West Center used to have this cafeteria and a bar and it looked out at the beautiful garden and what a great place to have people enjoy themselves, you know, and after hours and keep people around. Okay, I am very concerned, of course, I am very against, as a lifelong teacher of all levels, the College of Ed moving on to the center part of the campus, mainly because all of the faculty that serves the student teaching population go on and off campus all the time and all of the student teachers go on and off all the time. This is simply to cram them into a center in a place where they really, the, the whole idea is get them out in cohorts to go to Waianae or to go to, you know, Ha'ola or some other place to get them to be part of the larger community. And I think this does, it's the opposite. Now, I've been saying this all along. I haven't said that it was a surprise. Okay, the other thing is, years ago, decades ago.
Thirty seconds.
I got the Board of Regents to agree and they voted on it to have the gateway named Moiliili Gateway. And it is a complete fact, but never has there a sign gone up, never has the beautification, which I suggested, which is the greenery and everything also gone into that. That's the one that you enter from Cala Lane and, and you go into the back of the swimming pool or whatever. Okay, so thank you for whatever you can do, Elmer.
Any other community members that are here in person? And anyone online? All right, go.
Did you say that you get 70%? How much federal funding and does that come with stipulations with that funding?
Well, overall, 70 is for the whole university of our campus, but each unit has a very different range of amount of funding. Some get 100%, some only get 80, some only get half. What happens now is that we are still looking on whether. There are other resources that which we can actually pull to make it work. These, most of the funding are usually for a specific project. It has a specific need or response. We can't just take the money and move it to another project. It is specific towards what the funding is for and has to be used in that component. I wish we could actually do more with it, but it really depends on the grantor, whoever that is, and the specific project that we have.
When do you expect the library to be reopened or?
Oh, that's a good point. It's actually targeted for fall 2025, right around the corner.
Soon.
Yeah, it will be called the New Student Services Success Center. It will have a combination of academic, place to relax, study hall area, but it will be actually almost air-conditioned. The good thing about Sinclair Library, it is a historical place, so it has to keep it, it has to keep its figure of it. So it does take a lot more work to make sure we do not. Break that part of it.
All right, thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it, Elmer. All right, I do not think that Senator Ihara is here or anyone from his staff, right? Okay. Senator Fikana?
Good evening, Neighborhood Board members, and with all the interest in fireworks today, I do want to give you a brief report on what the Public Safety Committee in the Senate recently adopted. We had a hearing yesterday afternoon with joint committees where we took action on six of the fireworks measures. And I can run through the highlights of a few of them. One of them is a bill that calls for stiffer penalties and a lot more enforcement activity. This is part of the governor's package. It was drafted by the Attorney General's Office. And within state government, our new Department of Law Enforcement is now being headed up by the governor's nominee. is now being headed up by the Governor's nominee for Director, the former major, Mike Lambert, who some of you may know, has been a very, very active part of the Police Department. He was a candidate for Chief of the Department several years ago. And he's been a very collaborative, creative leader. So it looks as though, as between state government, county government, and even federal agencies, there's really a lot more opportunities for working together. Let's see, Senate Bill 227 establishes an illegal fireworks enforcement division within the department, and part of the mission of that division is going to be to establish a much broader working partnership so that this agency plus city and federal agencies will be able to work more closely together. And I know part of the issue is preventing illegal fireworks from coming into the state. So some of the pieces of legislation on page two focus on, let's see, 1226 calls for a program to inspect shipping containers. So I expect that there's going to have to be a lot more coordination between federal and state officials. Because as you can imagine, you know, the examination even of random containers can really slow down commerce and create a large bottleneck. So again, this is where we're looking to do a lot of coordination. The thing that is probably of interest, though, at the local level is that in the past, we did not have to have permits for things like sprinklers. I believe before I got to the council, the City Council had adopted legislation that banned all fireworks, but established a permit system. However, in recent years, what we found is those permits are being used to purchase more and more fireworks. So part of the legislation that we acted upon yesterday, Senate Bill 302, will limit the use of consumer fireworks solely to approve cultural events that have been permitted and are being operated by commercial operators, and limiting the number of permits that can be sold to individuals. One of the things that was reported to us during yesterday's hearing was that a number of individuals who are obviously making a lot of money from selling fireworks have bought up as many as 1,000 permits at $25 each. So when you add up the numbers, you know, it gives you a rough idea of just how explosive this illegal trade has become. So the six bills that we heard are a starting point. We expect that the House is also going to have their package of bills. But we were very encouraged by the close coordination that we saw yesterday between the Police Department, Attorney General's Office, Department of Law Enforcement, and what we hope will be many other agencies. Department of Law Enforcement is going to serve as the coordinator between Department of Transportation, a number of the airports, harbors, and other administrators. And we would be looking to work a lot more closely with some of the federal inspection teams. So that's kind of a brief round of highlights. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. That was really comprehensive and great. I have a question about the permitting stuff, just to go back to that. So if I get a permit right now, what can I buy?
You can buy fireworks that are supposedly the, what is it? Those firecracker type of fireworks where, you know, you explode them. They're in a long string.
The ones they have for like Chinese New Year and stuff.
Exactly. As far as aerials and all of those types of fireworks, those are not supposed to be sold to non-commercial users.
Oh, but you're saying you could get a permit to buy aerials as well?
No, you could not get a permit to buy aerials. But the example that the Police Department representative gave the other day regarding an individual who had purchased permits for a variety of fireworks, and this was someone who was purchasing, I guess, the, what is it? Chinese New Year, you know, kinds of firecrackers. Just the volume that that individual was purchasing showed that it was just the tip of the iceberg. It kind of demonstrated to the police that there must be a lot more activity going on than we are aware of.
If I have a permit right now, does it limit how many firecrackers I can buy? Is that why people get multiple permits?
I believe there is a limit as far as the individual permits, yeah.
Interesting. Okay, we have some questions on the board. Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, question. I don't know how to do it, no. How would I get a permit to buy fireworks? What do I do? I go to Time Supermarket and go, I'd like to have fireworks?
No, you would have to go through the city. It's typically overseen by the Fire Department. They are the ones who issue the permits, and it's usually for a specific period. So they only conduct those.
That's what I kind of thought, no. Wouldn't it be, wouldn't they figure out that I bought $9,000 worth of fireworks? And I got $9,000 worth of permits? I mean, how does that work out now?
Well, I think it shows that there's a large market of uncontrolled activity going on. But the fact that this has been happening only demonstrates that there's a lot of illegal activity that we have not been aware of. But because of the terrible tragedy on New Year's Eve, I think everyone is now committed to working together, you know, state, federal, county, and stopping that type of activity. And I think that's where the amazing thing to us was that the calls, the emails, I received messages from students in our community. You know, some in Papukalea, some in Makiki Heights, some in McCully, who also said that they're kind of worried because they don't know, you know, who might be setting off fireworks in their neighborhood, and they don't want to see anything happen to them and their families. So I think it kind of has galvanized a lot of community support. And so for the departments, they are moving as quickly as they can.
I understand that, but now, I, okay, I'm a crook. And I, I realize that you guys have a way of slowing down my purchase power and the money I make. How are you guys going to stop that? How are you going to tell workers, by the way, you're not making any more money here? How do we just stop it?
Well, hopefully, we do want to curtail the trade in illegal fireworks. But I think from the Governor's Package, there's a commitment to work with commercial operators to conduct shows in the community that are operated by licensed permit holders or to even shift away from fireworks into less destructive types of aerial displays. You know, I know in Waikiki earlier this year, we also had drone light displays, which are a lot less destructive. They are a lot less inflammatory. And so I think, you know, the trend is, if the communities throughout Oahu in particular demand action, I think this is the year that certainly in the legislature, but also within the Police Department and various federal and state agencies, there is a commitment to do a lot more and to prosecute.
Who else, Elmer? Daniela?
I have a question. Mentioning inspect shipping container includes ship, then airplane as well? Because I'm terrified, the idea that they are also transported by airplane, and we don't know.
Well, the bill calls for more harbor inspections.
Yes.
However, during the initial briefing that we had earlier this year, the former Director of Department of Law Enforcement did acknowledge that there has been quite a bit of activity occurring through the U.S. mail system. So they're stepping up efforts to work with the Post Office as well as aircraft and airline companies to ensure that they tackle all of these areas where illegal activity.
They can be inspected. And they inspect, thank you, the inspection is fundamental. But also, there is a limit of quantity of how much can be brought into the island. Also, the quantity is controlled.
Well, currently, a lot of what is arriving in Hawaii is not really being reported or revealed. You know, it's coming in illegally. So Department of Law Enforcement, you know, did say that they do collect and confiscate as much, you know, parcels that have weighed as much as 200 pounds coming in by air that they were able to dispose of. But they also pointed out that the volume that they have seen in the last two years in particular is something that is quite destructive. And they are also looking at increasing the penalties so that whomever is bringing in an illegal shipment should also be responsible for removing and getting those illegal fireworks out of Hawaii. Because they pointed out that having storage facilities in Hawaii to hold, you know, what is being confiscated can also be very hazardous in the community. So, you know, this, to me, this is the first time I have seen such a major effort at the state, county, and federal level. And it's, I think it's really because of all the community outcry.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to ask another question and just pivot. I know you were having a meeting about SBE 1632, and I would love to hear what type of work you're doing around that and what's happening.
We, Senator Ihara and I had a meeting earlier this week at which Peter Savio, who has circulated a book called Hawaii's Housing Solutions, moved to the mainland. And as a part of that discussion, we are looking at doing community forums in various communities because different communities have different needs. And so Senator Ihara's mailing list included a lot of different neighborhood boards throughout Oahu. And during the meeting, we started exploring different locations and different groups that may want to put on these meetings. As far as our area, we are looking at putting together a forum in February. So, you know, once we have a location and date nailed down, we will certainly get the word out. On Senate Bill 1432, that was heard on Tuesday by the Senate Housing Committee, and it did pass with amendment. So it's going to be on its way to Ways and Means Committee next.
All right. Is there anyone else on the board? Okay, let's open it to the community.
Hello, Senator. Has there, you know, has there been any change since I asked you last night regarding the cannabis bills? Has anything moved forward, either in your House?
Okay, as of last week, I think it's cannabis legislation is moving in the House. Oh, okay. Representative Garrett will take care of that question.
Any other neighbors that are in person?
More of a statement. As Vice Chair of the Consumer Protection Committee, we appreciate your attention to, there are a number of condo bills, again, again, again. So your attention to those would be appreciated. So, thank you.
Senator Fukunaga, the, that, I can't remember if it was a city or a state when they're trying to increase the density in the neighborhoods. Is that a state thing or a city?
Right.
Can you guys speak into the mic?
That legislation was in the state legislature. It passed last year. And it sort of directs the City Council and City Administration to increase density in neighborhoods like ours.
Has there been any more movement or meetings or anything like that? I'm very concerned about it because one of the, you know, huge issues is parking. And if they want to increase density, that means more resident.
Yeah. Well, I can't really speak to all of the provisions, but Bill 59 was taken up by the City Council in December. And it does contain a number of provisions for increased density in different locations. I think that's a question for Councilmember Nishimoto, and we're certainly willing to work with him.
All right. I think we're, one more in person? Okay.
Hi, my name's Dale. I had some questions about the fireworks. Particularly when there's a permit issued by the Fire Department, do they take any past consideration of citations for fireworks or criminal records into account when issuing that permit?
I can't really speak to what their current process might be. But I do know in the Governor's legislation that there is a much more stringent process. And the, I can, I think the focus of his, the Governor's bill is to say for lesser amounts of fireworks possession would become sort of like traffic citations. But it's for the large-scale acquisition and storage and setting off of illegal fireworks, as well as any kinds of property injury or deaths or that sort of thing, that will command very, very stringent penalties.
Thank you for that. And my second question is in reference, Councilman Nishimoto mentioned how there's such a high bar to prosecute. Is there anything making their way through the Senate now that would lower that bar to make it easier to prosecute people with fireworks?
Senate Bill 1324, which is the Governor's legislation, would also change some of the requirements for evidence. So currently, you know, one of the big issues, as was pointed out by the Police Department, is in order to prosecute, you have to have evidence. And usually, the evidence is the fireworks that have been exploded. So the definition does change what is required. You can have eyewitness or, you know, oral testimonies. And that would be a much different kind of standard that they would have to meet. So it's, it's kind of, I think, fairly well organized between Attorney General's Office, the prosecutor, Department of Police Department, Department of Law Enforcement. So it's a much more comprehensive effort than we ever received.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Chair, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Dale, I looked up the firecracker application, and the only thing it says is that you have to be over 18 years old, promise to only light your firecracker on Oahu, pay $25, purchase only up to 5,000 firecrackers, and pay with Visa, MasterCard, or Amex. Oh, just kidding. Oh, no, that's true. No cash, check, or debit. That was great. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I was on the phone. Anyway, this is an opinion. You know, we're, it always seems, and I'm not trying to be negative against our government, but it's kind of getting to that point. Because I feel like we're not doing things as preventative measures. You know, we constantly do things after the fact. Like after 20 people get blown up, after somebody gets hit on Kapulani, what's her name, Sarayara, then you put up the speed bump. Now you want to look into banning the fireworks or partially banning it. Why don't you just totally ban it and not have anybody play fireworks? Because it's a danger. I mean, people don't know how to handle this situation. And because of some rotten apples, everybody should be penalized. Then maybe that's it, then we all be penalized and don't play any fireworks, and everybody will be safe. You know, animals don't like the fireworks. I mean, I find it irritating as well, too. I find no use for it. So I don't think we need to have it, period. Maybe you have a little area where there's somebody who's overseeing people playing fireworks, and they can, they can play it in this certain section. Not in their home, but maybe a little, not a community, but maybe at the beach or whatever. Where there's somebody who can oversee it, it's from maybe nine to 12, and that's it. And that'll be like a little festival or whatever, and that's it. No more fireworks. Instead of going through all this discussion, whatnot, just ban it. It has no use. Honestly, there's no use with fireworks. It's just noisy. It's messy. It scares animals. You know, I had my hand up previously. You didn't see it. Anyway, so I was just wondering, why don't you guys discuss things that way? Make it more harsh penalties and just let it go. Then nobody will be hurt, and then the community doesn't have to pay. Who's paying? By the way, who's paying for all these people getting all that treatment in Arizona?
Sorry, I can't answer that question, but I'm happy to take that back and get an answer for you for next meeting.
Yeah, I want to, just want to know who has to pay all this for these people because their insurance is not going to cover all what they're going to have to go through.
Great. Thank you, Joanne. That was two minutes. Go ahead, Kate. Great. Thank you, Joanne. That was two minutes. Go ahead, Kate.
Two minutes.
I want to thank you for letting us know about what was coming down in the changes in our neighborhood. I think you were the only one to be, give us disclosure that there are going to be changes in density and so on and so forth. What I wanted to ask with the parking meters, what I'm reading about the plans is they're going to put more in, maybe on date, university. And the plan for the city is kind of a 15-minute city. And I don't know how many people are ready for that. So the object of the meters is to get people out of their cars, which I know you enjoy. But it's going to cause a lot of stress without being honest with people so they get used to it. And that's where I find fault is we're not getting any disclosure about what the plans are and the total increase in, in density. Thank you again for proactivity.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it, Senator. Okay, do we have Senator Morawaki, Morawaki's people on? Okay. Yes? Great.
Hi, everyone. I'm Cody. I'm Senator Morawaki's Legislative Aid for this session, and I'll be here for the remainder of the legislative session this year. I sent the newsletter for this meeting to the chair. I'm not sure if that was distributed, but to go over a few points from the newsletter. Construction of Halei Moiliili began last December. It's the first housing project exclusively for DHHL beneficiaries. The State Board of Education is still looking to fill several thousand teaching positions. And if you want more info, you can find a link in our newsletter. And recently, the Senate Ways and Means Committee has concluded its annual budget information briefings with various state departments and its review of the executive budget. Be on the lookout for the House because they're set to pass their state budget on Thursday, March 6. So it'll cross over to our hands around that time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take it back to the Senator and get back to you.
All right, do we have any questions? Anyone on the board or in person in the neighborhood community? Okay, Joanne, go ahead.
Oh, my hand was up previously. It wasn't, well, it wasn't for him, but I have a question. What, who was, who were you representing?
I'm Senator Morawaki's Legislative Aid for this legislative session.
Oh, I don't know if you can do me a favor, but can you find out what we can do? Because I've asked other government officials. I live across this house that seems to be Section 8 people. There are ex-cons or whatever. I don't know how they got there. But anyway, they're so noisy, the police come at least twice, three times a month. Disruption, fighting, children crying. How, is there some kind of bill that could help me, or could help, yeah, help residents? Because we have a lot of residents out here that are more elderly and they're getting frustrated with this certain house. Is there something that could help us with this home?
I'm not sure if there's any current legislation about that topic, but if you'd like to email us proposals for solutions surrounding.
Disturbance of the peace. Because police are coming like every, every, I would say, three times a month. And the owner is the guy who owns the spot. His name is Ahmad Ramadan, and he's a terrible neighbor, terrible person. So I have dealt with him and he hasn't done anything to help this neighborhood. He's made it worse. I don't know where he's get, he gets his money from, but he's buying so many properties around here and he doesn't take care of, he doesn't care what kind of people he put in, he puts in there. He, they're blasting fireworks around here illegally, not, not at New Year's, all different times.
Thirty seconds.
There's all kinds of problems. So is there some way you guys can help?
Um, I think currently your best option is to go to the police department.
I did, I did.
If there's any other solutions you have proposed, feel free to email us and we can propose bills or legislation for the next session. But currently, I don't think there's any bills related to that topic.
Just, just wondering.
All right, thank you so much for coming. Um, we have a couple folks in person, Representative Garrett.
Thank you, Chair Lee. Apologies to the board. I know I haven't been here in person in quite some time. I kind of took advantage of the Zoom option, but glad to be here today. You folks have my newsletter. This will be hitting the district fairly soon and actually mailbox is any day now. As I note in there, one of the things I'm really excited about this session is serving as the Chair of the Higher Education Committee, represent District 22, which is mostly Manoa. I'm a proud UH graduate. Trying to take advantage of this opportunity to reset the relationship between the legislature and the university. I know it's been contentious at times, but I'm excited about a new president coming on board and what that means for that. I know there was a question about cannabis. So House Bill, I think it was 1246, if I'm not mistaken. The House Judiciary and Agriculture Committee has passed it out of committee yesterday, but we actually voted to recommit the bills back to committee, meaning the bill is dead for the session. Just being completely candid, I have voted no on that legislation in the past. I personally feel that, you know, I'm just concerned about the public health impacts. Studies have shown that, you know, youth set, brain development still happens until age 25 and what that means. If there was some movement on the federal side, if it was scheduled down to a level three, you know, I'd be open to seeing what that might look like. But for this session, the bill is dead. And, you know, we just didn't have the votes in the House to push it forward. Couple of things I wanted to highlight in the newsletter, just some bills I introduced relating to CIP funding. Again, this is primarily Manoa specific. This is a reminder, District 22 is primarily Manoa Valley. It does come down towards Central Union Church on Beritania Street, and it goes all the way down by the Boyan Humane Society. So I do pick up parts of Makali and Moiliili. But, you know, again, speaking, wearing my hat is the Higher Education Chair. Just one of, one of the things I want to focus on is expanding access to education. And I wanted to highlight the Hawaii Promise Program, House Bill 542. Elmer kind of let the cat out of the bag, but we are having a hearing on campus tomorrow, which is really exciting. Again, I was a student once there and never imagined that one day I'd be in a position to serve as the Chair of a committee at, you know, in the House. But we're going to put democracy on the road. Representative Olds is a member of my committee. I know he'll be there as well. So we tried to design an agenda, and this bill will be on that agenda to allow the students to come testify. So we hear directly from the students on what's important to them. So I know we're coming up on the two-hour mark, so I'll just stop there and see if there are any specific questions. Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming, Representative Garrett. I wanted to ask you two questions related to what you have in your newsletter here. The first one is, could you talk about what you are trying to accomplish with HB 541? And then also this AI one?
Yes, so you folks probably remember the discussion we had last year about Senate Bill 3202. I don't, this is a bill that would allow homeowners to build at least two ADUs, accessory dwelling units. I voted no on this bill, as did Representative Olds' predecessor, are now council member. We were concerned about infrastructure impacts and kind of, you know, allowing further density in established neighborhoods. We all agree that, you know, we need more housing, but it was just a matter of how we go about it. So I introduced a bill that would essentially exempt Oahu from that provision. This is Act 39 that was just passed last year, so just apply to the neighbor islands. They obviously have a lot more land available than we do on Oahu. And again, I just didn't think it was appropriate to try to cram all these additional units, basically ADUs onto single-family properties. We already know there's challenges with parking, traffic, sewer capacity and whatnot. So that was my intention there with that bill.
And what about for people who might say, you know, I don't live in town and this is something that I should be able to do, I have tons of property. Right? I mean, a big part of the island does not live in a urban area.
That's true. I'll concede that. But again, we're, you know, representing our communities and, you know, in our particular districts, we didn't think this made sense to try to kind of force this kind of densification in our communities.
And then the AI?
Yep, so artificial intelligence is here. I'm sure a lot of us use ChatGPT probably on a daily basis. But right now, there's really no plan at the state level on how we're going to incorporate this. There's a lot of concerns about, you know, the privacy issues, how we're going to manage people's data when it comes to this. So I just want to make sure through this bill, House Bill 1384, and this is moving through the legislative process. It's having its second hearing tomorrow. So convening a council of various stakeholders, you know, the state CIO, bunch of other entities that have an interest in this. They basically designed a roadmap for the state so we can figure out how best to prepare for these dangers, but also utilize it and try to make, you know, government more efficient and whatnot.
All right, who has questions? Edendira?
No question, but just a comment. I went to the job talks for President Hensel, and she actually has a lot of experience with AI.
She does.
In her previous university capacity, so that's good.
Yeah, I'm excited. She has said that's one of her priorities for the university. There's actually another bill that would set up, that we passed out of the Higher Education Committee that would set up an AI institute within the university itself through the research department. So we have a couple of different bills moving in that sense, and we'll see how it plays out through the session.
Who else on our board? Anyone online and on the board? All right, any community members? All right. Thank you so much for coming.
Okay.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Representative Olds.
Representative. Representative, if I go Olds, House District 23. Stop it, stop it, stop it. Yeah, so first time talking to you guys in the session as a sworn-in member. We're in full swing, learning a lot. I'm on four committees. So every day, Monday mornings and afternoons, I'm completely booked. So Hall or Rambian Mondays. So those committees are Human Services and Homelessness, I'm the Vice Chair, Health, Higher Education, with Chair Garrett, and Regular Education, Chair Woodson. So lots of good things coming out. Do you guys want to hear about some legislation that I'm putting in? So I sent my newsletter to, to Chair here. Hopefully it gets disseminated out to you folks soon. Just some things. So as you guys know, I ran a public safety ticket. So a lot of my bills are a little spicy. So I'm sorry. But, you know, this is, this is the prime opportunity right now, right? This is the first session post-grants pass that we have an opportunity to introduce legislation that can be a little spicy, just to see what kind of what we can get away with, right? Put the toe in the, in the water and see what the temperature's like, both within the body and, you know, with all the other organizations that we have that are going to be weighing in on it. So it's not just us that makes the decisions. One of my spicy bills was heard and the Office of the Public Defender was absolutely against it. So it, it provides the opportunity for us to learn from this, to see what we can get away with, create dialogues. And as it goes through committees, the bill changes and hopefully the bills come up better than it was when we first put it in. So, do you guys like to hear some? All right, so I have HB 537. So this one is not a homeless bill, but this was a helmet bill. Putting helmets on to two-wheeled motorized vehicles has been a thing for some years. It always seems to fail largely from what I was told because the motorcycle lobby is really strong and they come in and roll deep. We just had that fatality right over by the old Shokodo on Kapilani the day before Thanksgiving. My family was there. I may have shared this before, but we actually drove past it. It's really hard to explain to the kids that kind of situation and then why they should be wearing a helmet when they're riding their bicycles. But basically what we would do is the bill is designed to enforce federal standard department transportation qualified or certified helmets for any two-wheeled motorized vehicle that can go over 25 miles an hour. So its speed needs to be dependent, and this would also include e-bikes. Because if you, I wrote into the bill, if, even if you pedal, if it has a motor and it can go over the speed, you'd be qualifying for that. So kind of spicy, it's going to be heard next week. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but hopefully we're protecting our heads. Right? Because it creates a, you know, a 30% chance of increased survival rate and then a much larger percentage of if you do survive, you don't have brain damage. I think that's really important. I used to ride a motorcycle, wear a helmet. I used to ride a moped. I kind of wore a helmet when my wife made me. When she found that I didn't, she made me wear it. I didn't go that fast. But, you know, we, we progressed through this, these phases of, of safety when it comes to the roadways, right? Not that long ago, you didn't have to wear a seatbelt, you could drink and drive. Children didn't need car seats. You could even text, you could be on your phone and drive. But we went through all these progressions for, for safety on the roads to help preserve human life. This is the natural next step. We'll see how it goes next week. Some spicy homeless bills. So there's two that are, that are still floating around right now. So I had one bill that died unfortunately, it was just, it couldn't get scheduled in time, it was a triple referral. This was my clean waterways bill. Essentially, what it would have done is would have allowed law enforcement to be able to go into the riverways to remove homeless and their stuff from these encampments and not put them in jail, but actually just get them out of the space. So we didn't, I didn't write in the law that these people need to be thrown in jail. The whole intent was we need to preserve human life, we want to make sure trash is not getting into the waterways. They're just going to be removed. If they don't comply or if they try to resist, there would have been some follow-up enforcement actions in terms of citations, that things could have been discarded. Unfortunately, we lost five minutes late on top of that bill. So the good news is Rep. Ham is on, he'll hopefully talk about it. He has a really good bill that is a little toned down. So instead of being ghost, you know, ghost peppers, it's probably a little bit more chulula. Essentially what it is, is if property is left in these waterways for longer than 24 hours, it can be removed. I, I will let him talk about it a little bit more because I'm not a master of the bill. But in essence, what we want is we don't want people harp in these places. So last week, Thursday, I actually went out to the Kameki Bridge over here on Kapilani. I went into the waterways to tell the homeless that were there, guys, get up. I had video on it, you can check it out on my Instagram. Unfortunately, some of the warnings that came up closer to the Alawai didn't make it that far upstream. But they, they've been living there for a while, so thankfully a lot of people got up and no one got hurt. But some stuff got washed away. One man, one guy's tent actually washed completely away. So some not-so-spicy bills. So my homeless triage center bill just passed today and the Human Services Committee. Essentially, so last year, I know I talked about the Mental Health Crisis Center over in Evil A. So we just took a tour of it on Monday. It wasn't what I expected. It's a lot more limited. They use, they work what they call in the 23 hours. This, this triage center would be the next step. So after they transition, so they stabilize, which they include a padded room that's self, I guess confined, so the only person who's ever used it actually asked to be in the padded room. This would be the next step. So after they, they settle down a little bit, they've had some case management, they're being talked down off the cliff or they're being talked through, whatever their substance abuse process is. This would be the natural next step. So instead of just putting them back out on the street, this would be the next resource for them to get a little bit more prolonged case management and care. They do substance abuse, they do mental health, kind of a whole thing.
Representative Olds is going to give you one more minute and then we can take questions.
Yes, yes, yes. The last one is, I could talk about the spicy homeless bill. So trying to attack the massage parlors in our district. So I know for our, our neighbors living out in the Alamana, Kimoko area, that's kind of a, an interesting thing that they have to deal with, like the game rooms. So massage parlors are intertwined with the underground. So things like drugs, things like firearms, if there's a network similar to what they were trying to do for the game rooms, we're attacking the landlords. This one hasn't been scheduled to be heard yet, but essentially if a place like VAPs gets stung, sex trafficking is being charged to members in there, we can actually charge the property management or the owner if they're, they're shown to be complicit with knowledge of that institution.
All right, thank you. All right, we have some questions. Go ahead.
What's the triage center bill number?
HB 943. HB 943.
All right, who else has questions for the representative? No one on the board? I want to, I want you to talk about your spicy homeless bill.
Wait, which, which spicy one? Okay, all right, okay, so I have two, two that are still alive that are currently being heard. One is titled the Safe Bus Stops, and the second one is titled Safe Entrance Ways. The spicy, the spicy bus stop bill is inspired particularly right over here on King and Kalakaua with all the issues that we've had historically over here. So what it would do is it would forbade domiciling of individuals within 20 feet of a bus stop. So that means you cannot set up shop within 20 feet of a bus stop. We are working on this because there are already city audiences that are related to this. And the whole process is HPD has mentioned to us that they feel like their hands are tied because of ACOD lawsuits. This is what they say. So they feel like they need a post-grants pass piece of legislation to kind of unlock it for them. We're, we're, we're now working with AG's office and we're trying to figure out this bill might be bold. So if it sounds like it's settled and it's more of an enforcement issue, we're not going to go through with it. Spicy number two is Safe Entrance Ways, and this puts a similar buffer around entrance ways to businesses or residents. So it's 20 feet, especially along King Street. What ends up happening is when a doorway opens, people with domicile, they'll set up their shop right over it. If the doorway, as long as the door can open to its full extent and someone can get in and out, it satisfies the fire code, but because it's on public property, business owners, or if you live on a unit that releases right into public property, you can't tell them to move, even though they can still be impeding entrance way to your, you know, business or to your residence. Again, these bills are not designed to put anyone in jail. The language was to say, hey, can you just relocate? Again, these bills are not designed to put anyone in jail. The language was to say, hey, can you just relocate a little bit? And those are the two spicies.
Michelle, I think you have your hand raised.
I did, yes. Thanks. I just wanted to say I'm happy to hear about that helmet bill. I was just wondering what number it is.
Come with bill is HB five three seven.
Great. Thank you. Good luck with that one.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the room? Okay, go ahead, Kate. Oh, and Karen.
Congratulations. A couple of quick questions. I think I may have lost count, but you were signed on to like two hundred bills. Wow. Okay. You'll be busy. And of those, there were four that were condo bills. My personal, and I know there are others who are very interested in specifically thirteen eleven, which is about proxies. So I appreciate your attention to that.
Kate, you want to say something?
I think I emailed him before. We have, House rules were recently revised and not many people knew about it. And it had seventy-eight pages of revised House rules. And one of them, one of the constituency chair goes, continue to allow single individual committee chair to kill legislation proposals without a public hearing and without vote and without reason. Was anybody able to go over seventy-eight pages of new House rules, especially as busy as you are?
I did receive an email. Thank you. Thank you for the concern. You know, it's important. I'm gonna move this mic a little bit so I can. So you know, it's important and that there was a lot of controversy toward the opening of session. I think a lot of people are aware of that. And I probably am not the best person in the room to speak about the House because it's my first time ever seeing them. But just to talk a little bit about the process from my own perspective, just from my, as a freshman legislator, first time in the body, no previous experience in the Capitol at all. I read through, we did a lot of meetings talking about the House rules. No one was ever forced or pushed away or silenced when we were sounding off and making changes. We had multiple meetings about how we, you know, how do we like how this sounds and this and that. And by the time we started to get to that final product, I'm not sure, am I allowed to speak about caucus hearings? I'll speak very lightly to it, but we had dialogue. It wasn't like rules were just given to us and they were saying they said to approve it. We had lots of opportunity input. We had lots of dialogue within the majority caucus, within the Democrats. And things are brought up. There were notes made, but from some of the more senior legislators that are there, I don't want to list her just because I don't know if I'm supposed to be speaking about it. There has been significant progress that she had noted. She had still had issues, but she had seen significant progress in the right direction by where we were at at that time. And one of the big issues that was mentioned about getting the House rules ratified was because the committees had changed, we can't start the committee hearings until the House rules are ratified, which would basically screw up the whole process of legislation. The House rules are malleable. It's not like we voted and we're done. It's still being talked about even now, like we still talk about it. And the way forward is continued dialogue. You know, the neighboring representatives was very vocal about it. And again, this is my own perspective. I feel like it's been one-sided because the public has only really been hearing one side, which is that person's side. No one else from the body has been coming out to talk about it, at least not publicly, not to the press. And what it does is it gives people an opinion formulating of only one small perspective. When in reality, there's a lot more dialogue, there's a lot more to the conversation than just, oh, you know, these advisory committees, you know, these cloak and dagger shadow councils, you know, deciding bills, because then none of that was in there. And yes, there is an issue about the chairs and their ability to kill bills. My bill died because it couldn't get here. It didn't get heard in time. And part of it was my fault. I needed to communicate better with the chair. So even though I sent my emails and my memos to him, his preferred method of getting these memos was via a hand-delivered memo. We'll have to, it's my, that was my fault. I didn't know. And when I talked to him about it, it was five minutes too late. But at the same time, like we have a chair sitting right here, there's so many bills. Was it sixteen hundred and something bills that it just, there's not enough time to get everything. So we were in a hearing yesterday for almost three hours for the nurses, the nursing bill. And that was one bill. And then we had to jump into the health committee and it's very challenging. I'm new, but just based off of what I see, we have to continue to fix the House. And I feel like the energy is good, at least from what I feel. It seems like there's been a weight been lifted. A lot of people are coming to the table to discuss that they felt like they couldn't before. We just have to keep moving forward. So I, it's not, it's never a done deal. Never. It can always change. And as we, we don't have an election this time, so as the session finishes and we start having more meetings about revisions to the House bill, because we only started doing that after the general election in November. So for freshmen like me.
Representative Olds, I want to get one more person. And then we still have Representative Tam on here, too.
Did you get my email?
Okay.
Email you back.
Joanne, are you still on? Go ahead.
Hi, Kaika.
Hi, hi, Joanne.
This is Joanne. So anyway, we've talked for a while and then I wanted to just make a comment. You know, I'm putting my hope in you as a new member of the legislature because, you know, it's the same, to me, basically, it's been the same old, same old, talking about the same old, same old things for year after year and nothing, nothing really changing. And I'm hoping that you will go in there to change some things. And like, you know, Trump says, common sense instead of nonsense. To me, a lot of things that people propose is nonsense. And I think that we got to get back to common sense, common sense laws, common sense values that we have so lost. And maybe I'm an older generation, but you know what? I think that a lot of things is just totally crazy, beyond crazy. I have friends that are, my daughter's in education, I have friends in education. Like I told you, they're coming to school and identifying as a furry. What the hell is a furry? A cat? They come to school, identify as a cat, then they should go to the Humane Society and get an education. These kinds of things should not be promoted. And I'm hoping that in that legislature, you guys discuss things that are common sense, not nonsense. And that's what I'm looking forward to, a better society where you guys will take into account what the law-abiding citizens should get, not always looking at what should the homeless get. Okay, homelessness is not a crime, but what they are doing is a crime. Littering the parks, destroying the bathrooms. I mean, we are not able to go into the bathrooms. We're not able.
Thirty seconds.
Going to the park. So I want things to change for the benefit of the law-abiding citizens, not only laws that are helping criminals and other people who make bad choices. Do we not get anything because we made some good choices?
Okay. Do you have a question in there?
That's the question. That's my question is, do we not get something? Do we, as a law-abiding citizens that live in this neighborhood, get to have something for ourselves, like a park?
Okay, we're at two minutes.
Nice sidewalk, everything. Back, give it back to us.
All right. Thank you.
You know, you shouldn't keep cutting people off because in some ways, there's some things that are important.
I'm sorry. This conversation is done for now. We have the two-minute mark.
Well, you keep interrupting a lot yourself and you don't even have two minutes.
Representative Olds.
Would you say, like, like Councilman Nishimoto says, we have to do our best and just we have to keep trying. So I'll try my best.
All right. Thank you so much for coming this evening. It's great to have you. I think Representative Tam is on. Hi, we have a hard stop at like nine minutes, so.
I will meet as fast as I can. So you have my report. I am very fortunate to be the House Tourism Chair this year as well as a member of Economic Development and Consumer Protection and Commerce. I can, I heard someone talk about the noise cameras earlier. It was a piece of legislation that was passed in two thousand twenty-three that was authored by myself and Senator Morawaki. It is not just to Waikiki, it is to mostly the urban area of Honolulu. And we are soliciting community input. DOT has promised us that they're going to solicit community input before they put up where these should go because they want to know where the hotspots are. DOT has not given me an update on where they're at yet. But I do know that I feel, I think that they have finished the process of procuring a vendor. So, but I can provide an update next time I'm here. Someone also mentioned about the Alawai. I just want to take this time to thank many of the state agencies that cleared up the Alawai before we had last week's storm on Thursday. Because of their efforts, the Alawai didn't have to flood and go into our streets because maybe the breeze were taken out and it was, so it took away the potential for it to clog any of the drains. I did introduce a bill. Thank you, Representative Olds, for signing on to that and for mentioning it. It basically allows the DLNR to go into streams to take any piece of property that has been left abandoned for twenty-four hours. It was introduced by Senator Morawaki and myself as too. And it had a hearing today and DLNR did submit some amendments to make the bill more workable. So I'm looking forward to seeing what the bill looks like after the committee finishes its draft. That, it also noise. I also introduced a bill that would require the issuance of safety checks only after the inspection has concluded that there was no illegally modified noisy muffler onto the moped. And I know that there's concerns of homelessness. I've also introduced a bill that would turn the return to home program that we currently have as a pilot program into a permanent program. That is all that I have. I'm open to any questions in the six minutes that I have left.
Thank you. All right. Who on our board has questions for Representative Tam? Anyone here in person or anyone online? I don't see anyone there. All right. Any community members? All right. Go ahead, Karen.
Thanks, Rep Tam, for the update on the, I didn't realize it was so long ago with the noise cams and look forward to some action on that. That's great. Yeah. Also, since you're on the CPC, I counted nineteen, I guess, measures about condos. And again, my interest in my cohort and my condominium is thirteen eleven proxies, but there are a lot of, a lot of issues that are of interest to us and they keep coming up year after year after year. So appreciate your support on those.
Thank you. Yeah. I guess I said, I've sat on CPC, so if it gets scheduled, I will ask robust questions and review the testimony diligently.
All right. Anyone else have anything for Representative Tam? Think we are good. Okay, we are really winding down time. Does anyone have a one-minute announcement? Looks like Laura does. Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I'll send you the information, Morgan. One is I've asked for the lay of community boards to ask the Army Corps of Engineers to come out and ask what's going on with the flood control. I had heard that they had dropped out from doing that, but I don't know for a fact or if they've modified or whatever. We need to have a representative come to the next meeting and fill out. The second of all is we need to have the DTS, the Department.
Thirty seconds.
Services to come out, Roger Morton or whoever. What are they doing? They put out all of those replications of bridges they wanted, but they didn't suggest that we, the community, had had any serious input. So if you could have both of those groups come out, it's, they're really important. We're sitting here on time bombs and we need to either say that they're out of the business and we'll be happier or we'll have to hear something and further explanation from them. Thank you. I'll send it to you.
Thank you, Laura. All right. Is there anyone else who had a one-minute announcement they wanted to make? All right. Go ahead, Betsy.
Hi, I'm, can you hear me? Okay. Hi, I'm Betsy Kawahura. And as you have maybe known from last year, I was one of the few who catalyzed the cleaning of the Makiki Stream right at the intersection of South King and Kalakaua by Jack LeBach. So I've been able to discuss things further continually with Ikaike Olds, Scott Nishimoto, Paul Robati, as well as certain members of the community in terms of trying to create a resolution on the Makiki Stream. And the resolution's main intention.
Thirty seconds.
Is to protect the stream and to create some kind of action to keep it clean and to make it easier for the bus riders, et cetera. So Ian Ross had helped do the stream resolution. It was passed in Makiki. So I really wanted to encourage, you know, the board here to be able to look at the resolution. And Paul Robati had promised me that it should be brought to the boards voting for March in the March meeting next month. So this is what I'm trying to request for you.
Thank you.
I look forward to talking with you.
We will. All right. Thank you, everyone. Let's go ahead and see if we can just approve this written summary of the video record. All good?
Sorry, I have questions. Maybe it's for Curtis. Curtis, I noticed what looks like a discrepancy. I'm not sure. So when we read Section Three City and County of Honolulu Monthly Reports, there's much less detail about what questions our reporters got back to our community compared to the following section, Section Four. So for example, in Section Four, it says, this person came back to the meeting, reported on this concern that was mentioned the previous month. But when we look at Section Three, the mayor's rep, there's no, there's not as much detail about what the mayor's rep reported back to us on. So I'm wondering if we can.
Do you want that report as a link?
No. So when Mike comes and he says, I followed up on this question and followed up on that question, that's not in here.
Okay, I can add it.
But it is in, but it is in Section Four of the drafted minutes.
Section Four.
I'm looking at the drafted minutes from December.
Yes, I have that. On page. On page.
Okay. All right. I need to adjourn this meeting because it is nine o'clock. So if you're running for neighborhood board, make sure you get your info in in the next ten days or so. Thank you, everyone. Happy New Year.